Good evening, everyone. I am Kate Ford and we have concluded closed session this evening. It is Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, five thirty-one P M. And I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District School Board. And now for information about interpretation of this meeting.
Thank you, Board President Ford. Good evening. I will give this announcement in English and in Spanish with regards to language interpretation. Buenas tardes. Voy a dar este anuncio sobre la interpretación en inglés y en español. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are using a laptop or a desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says "Interpretation." Please click on the globe now and select "English." If you are using an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select "Language Interpretation," then select "English" and click "Done." And remember, when it's your turn to speak, please remember to be loud and clear and speak at a moderate pace. We also have American Sign Language, A S L interpretation for this meeting. If you will be using A S L interpretation, please use a Zoom app on your computer, tablet, or phone to join this meeting. If you join this meeting through your web browser, you may not be able to see the A S L interpreter at all times. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted es bilingüe, no tiene que presionar nada. Si usted no es bilingüe, tendrá que elegir su idioma para escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla a la derecha en forma de globo que dice "Interpretación." Haga clic ahí ahora y seleccione "Español." Si está usando un iPad o su teléfono, localice el menú de tres puntos, haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas," elija "Español," y "Finalizar." O si está en inglés, dice "Done." Y recuerde, cuando se hace su turno de hablar, por favor, hable con voz fuerte y clara y a un paso moderado. Gracias. Thank you. We may begin.
Thank you. And now, Dr. Maldonado, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Please rise and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, for the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
There was no reportable action taken in closed session this evening, but we will be voting on two student-related items later during Action Agenda. Tonight, the school board is again meeting in person, wearing masks, as mandated by the Santa Barbara County Public Health, and the public may participate through live streaming. We are very hopeful that our COVID-19 rates will decline significantly so that we may invite the public to participate in our meetings soon. The COVID-19 report is at six P M. tonight, and there are two public hearings later in the meeting also. And the board will try to take a ten-minute break at about seven-thirty or as close to that as reasonable and if necessary. Dr. Maldonado, will you continue with your report to the board?
Yes. Good afternoon, Board President Ford, Board members, public who is here with us, our cabinet members, our parents. I want to start off with a report on what is happening, what has been happening this week. We did start off our week, or ended our week last week, by marking the twentieth anniversary of the devastating attack on the World Trade Center in New York City. Our thoughts are with those who were impacted by this tragic and historic event that took place on September eleventh, two thousand one. I wanted to take a moment this evening to pause and reflect on that occasion that affected so many of us across our country and in the world so deeply. Thank you. Next, I'd like to give an opportunity to have you and our, and our public who is watching tonight, to hear from our new hires. We have had many new administrators hired for Santa Barbara Unified. And we're always happy to welcome those who join us in our Equity Agenda. We'll start off with the promotion of one of our internal candidates, former principal of Goleta Valley Junior High, Mauricio Ortega, who has been promoted to Director of Educational Technology. We've asked him to join us tonight and just say a few words about his work and what he plans to do in his new role. Mr. Ortega, are you with us?
I am. Thank you. All right. Well, good evening, Board President Ford, Board members, Superintendent Maldonado. I wanted to share that I've always been intrinsically motivated by educational technology and transitioning to this new role is just a wonderful experience for me to continue supporting our community, which I've come to admire through the various leadership opportunities that I've had within our district. I want to share that, you know, one of the things that I like about our E T S department mission of ensuring educational success for all students, researching, promoting, and supporting the effective integration of learning collaboration. Those are the skills that I truly seem to admire wherever I go because collaboration, community, critical thinking, and creativity really drive the vehicles for educational technology. And so I look forward to the ongoing collaboration with our leaders, really to create a culture for our teachers and learners and empower the use of technology in innovative ways. So happy to be here and happy to enjoy in the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega, and congratulations. Next, we have Principal Sonia Amaral, who joined us as principal of La Cuesta Alta Vista High School. And I have to say that she has hit the ground running, and I'm so impressed with her works already. And we are, there she is. Okay, go ahead, Principal Amaral.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Dr. Maldonado. I am really excited to be joining this district. One of the things that I had said in my interview is that my own daughter graduated from a continuation high school and had an amazing experience and was very successful and told me so much about what she liked. So it's full circle in my life and in my career to, to lead at Alta Vista and La Cuesta. I'm excited to be part of a great staff with amazing relationships with our students, with our additional challenges of bringing on students in alternative education setting now with new legislation. We're excited to make that happen and get all of our students being successful at our school. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me to the meeting to introduce myself and say hello to everyone.
Thank you, Principal Amaral. Next, we have the former Assistant Principal of Goleta Valley Junior High, who applied and was selected to become the principal after Mr. Ortega was promoted. And that is Ms. Clancy Chu Merritt, who I've also seen hit the ground running, didn't miss a beat, and has kept things going well over at Goleta. So Ms. Clancy, please continue.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Board President Ford, Board members, and Superintendent Maldonado. I am so honored to be here tonight and to be, to join the leadership team of Santa Barbara Unified as the principal of Goleta Valley Junior High. You know, I love to be able to tell my quick story. I'm a product of Santa Barbara Unified. I attended Wilson Elementary, that's no longer there downtown, Lacumbra, and I'm a Santa Barbara Don. So, and I also have the added benefit that both of my parents were teachers in this district for forty years. So I am very grateful for some very rich life experiences as well as a wonderful professional, professional learning along my career that has brought me to this point. I have a very deep-rooted value in just education and how it can empower every student to achieve things. So I bring that passion and those values to Goleta Valley. I'm grateful that I'm carrying on the mission here of sale. We ensure safety, accountability, inclusion, and learning for all of our students. So again, I'm honored and privileged to lead an amazing G V team. Our families and our students are amazing, and so I'm grateful for the opportunity. And I'm thankful that I had a few minutes to share that with you tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations again, and thank you for taking on this such an important role. And we're so happy to hear so much background in her life story as well. Next, we have another Assistant Principal that we promoted to the role of principal. This time, Ariel Curry, principal, the new principal of Santa Barbara Junior High School. Ms. Curry, please tell us how it's been going in your role, your new role. Congratulations.
Thank you, Superintendent Maldonado. Good evening, Board members, Dr. Maldonado and executive cabinet members. I'm so excited to be serving as the principal of Santa Barbara Junior High. This is my thirteenth year in our district and seventh year as an administrator, and I feel like transitioning into this role has been full circle. I had the opportunity in my administrative career to start out as a district-level leader, supporting our special education department, and got to work really closely with all of our different departments on building systems to support our students and teachers at the site level. And so now that I'm able to execute these plans into actions and be a part of developing equitable and inclusive systems in our schools and creating a cool environment, a school environment where students feel connected and enjoy learning and being at school. I'm just so grateful to have the opportunity to lead a school in that effort. I'm excited for this year. I can't believe that it's only been two and a half weeks that I've been in this role, and it feels like I had been there for a lifetime. The staff and the students are incredible and welcome to me so warmly into our school community from day one. In fact, I've been telling the kids, you know, it's important to me to get to know as many of your names as I possibly can. And anytime I'm out at passing period or at lunchtime, students come up to me and say, "Hey, Ms. Curry, do you remember my name?" And every day, I start to remember more and more names, and it gets better and better. So just really enjoying the junior high world and the beauty that is working with that age group. And I'm so excited to continue the great work in our district now serving as a secondary leader. So thank you for your time, and I'm excited to be a condor.
Thank you so much. Congratulations again, and we're so excited that you took this challenge on. And last, we have Ms. Heidi Harvey, who is joining us as the Director of School Performance and Student Outcomes. And as you know, in this role, she's going to be responsible and helping us a lot with meeting many of the compliance requirements for both state and federal programs, which are crucial to our student outcomes and to support our student, our, our school leaders. There she is. Welcome, Ms. Harvey. And please tell us a little bit more about you and your role.
Thank you so much. Good evening, esteemed trustees and Dr. Maldonado. It is my absolute pleasure to be here in Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara Unified School District. A little about myself, I am a Santa Barbara native, born and raised here. College happened, life happened, and I ended up working in Orange County for the last big chunk of time. Had a lot of wonderful varied experiences as the Special Education Executive Director in Cabestrona Unified. I have been an elementary principal for thirteen years at comprehensive sites with special programs and have had the opportunity to work closely with lots of different departments in a couple of different districts. I'm very passionate about inclusion and equity, and I know that that is a real concern that we need to address in all of our work together. And I've had, just in the couple of weeks I've been here, I've had wonderful collaborative experiences with the staff here. And I look forward to being able to support those initiatives and to support our school leaders as well in my role. So yes, our SIPS A and F P M, federal monitoring, a lot of other compliance areas. I'm looking forward to bringing life to that and to supporting our, our school district. So thank you so much for bringing me aboard.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harvey. And that, that is introduction to our new hires. Next, Board members, I just want to share a couple of more news, and then we have some performances. Some of you may have already heard me speak about this in a recent video message, but I wanted to take this opportunity to share with you that we developed these family-friendly guides for our parents and guardians that identify what students should know at each stage of their education. I've been referring to these as grade-level expectations. And these grade-level expectations will not only be posted on our district website, but we expect that they will be reviewed as part of the back-to-school night events from our teachers. Could be used also during our parent conferences and other events throughout the school year so that we continue to encourage our parents to be partners with us in the education of their students. We encourage parents, as they meet with teachers and learn more about what their students should know and learn and be able to do by the end of each grade level, to ask questions. Start with your teacher's counselor, sorry, your teacher's, let me start again. Start with your students, teacher, counselors, or administrators, if they have any more questions. Next, we are continuing to focus on surveillance testing. You'll hear more about it in our COVID report. But we will also be making a major push to get all our students eligible to be vaccinated in junior high and high school campuses. We have partnered with Santa Barbara County Public Health and Cottage Health Systems to host a series of mobile vaccine clinics at five or secondary campuses beginning the week of September twenty-seven. We were originally going to start the September twentieth week, but there was a slight delay. We are asking our students to help spread the word on this and have launched a contest to get our young people involved. All of the details are on our website, and you can see from here we're hosting these at different days and times and across our school district. September fifteenth to October fifteenth is, as you know, National Hispanic Heritage Month, and you will have an opportunity to consider a resolution a little later. Each year, we observe this holiday and celebrate history, culture, and contributions. This year's theme is celebrating Hispanic-American community leaders and champions. And we want to recognize some of our own incredible Hispanic champions this evening. So we're going to start with food services. We have a, one of our classified employees was recently recognized by Santa Barbara County Education Office as Classified School Employee of the Year, Isidro Duarte. He is a kitchen leader at Franklin Elementary School and has served our district for almost seventeen years. Unfortunately, he couldn't be with us tonight to be recognized because he has a second job. He was nominated by Food Service Director Matt Ditman, and Matt has said that he nominated him because Isidro is one of the best, brightest, and most dependable employees that he has or that we have. During this pandemic, when many families were struggling to put food on the table, school food service has been an instrumental service, and Isidro is an essential part of that. He helped feed our community and, most importantly, helped members in our community avoid the feelings of indignity often associated with getting free meals by treating each person as an important and respectable member of our community. And I look forward to congratulating him in person. If you get to go to Franklin Elementary, I encourage you to do the same as, again, he has been essential to our grab-and-go meal service and other work as well. And we have two performances for you this evening. We are going to start with Jonathan Cordero Rabe, a seventh grader at Santa Barbara Junior High. His family is also here with us tonight. His father, Corey Cordero Rabe, is one of our sixth-grade teachers at Monroe. His mom is a local teacher as well. Jonathan started on alto saxophone at Monroe Elementary and soon switched to baritone sax. He plays baritone sax in the junior high jazz band and both drums and tuba in the junior high advanced band. Welcome, Jonathan. And he and I shared that we're both very excited. We couldn't figure out which one of us is more excited. He'll be performing a piece that most of you who are Star Wars fans will recognize. Thank you so much, Jonathan, and Mom and Dad as well. I think your sister's with you. We really appreciate you being here, and what a talent. Next, Board members, we want to leave you with a special treat. And I'm going to let the camera move away from us. Agustín Camarillo, one of our paraeducators, and hopefully soon to be one of our teachers. Mr. Vecchio, I was, I am recruiting him. And his children, Jaime Camarillo, a first grader at Washington. His daughter, Sofia Camarillo, is one of our preschoolers. And Isabel are part of our local folklorico group, Grupo de Danza Folkórica Que Zalcoatl. Welcome, and thank you for being here. Thank you so much. Can we give another round of applause? Beautiful. So much talent in Santa Barbara Unified to celebrate. And that concludes my superintendent's report. I'll turn it back to you, Board President.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. This is our third meeting where we have featured performing arts performances for this board, and that, those two performances were fantastic. I'm so grateful for everyone's efforts to make this happen. So before we go on to board comments and correspondence, actually, we'll go straight into the COVID-19 report. But first, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate a number of retirees tonight. First of all and foremost, our classified management retirement. Steve Viszalini, the Director of Facilities and Modernization, has announced his retirement effective October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, with thirty-two-plus years of service to the district. Steve, I know you're around, so we all thank you so much. We also have some additional classified retirements that have taken place. William Davison is a special education paraeducator at Dos Pueblos High School. He retired with thirteen-plus years of service. Luz Maria Galván is a school health assistant at McKinley Elementary, and she retired with thirty-three-plus years of service to the district. And Richard Derrio is a special education para with the WIN program with thirty-one-plus years of service. So on behalf of the board, I wish you a healthy and happy retirement filled with much-deserved rest, relaxation, and new adventures. And now I would like to ask everyone for a round of applause for these retirees, and then we will go on to the COVID-19 report. Dr. Maldonado.
Thank you. And I will ask the amazing Dr. Wagenek, who's been doing all this work plus for us, to go ahead and give us a report. And I also know that we have our great partner in this work, Susan Klein Rothschild, with us. Will we join you? No, not today. Susan, sorry, that's what I was supposed to say, is the opposite. Susan won't be able to be with us. But Dr. Wagenek will make sure that we talk about what's going on with our county as well. Thank you.
All right, back at the podium. Good evening, Superintendent Maldonado, President Ford, Board, and my colleagues. I bring to you the twenty-seventh COVID-19 report. Next slide, please. So we always return to our key factors to remind us of what we're looking at on a regular basis, the research and understanding, that's really the science behind COVID, vaccination information, information to you on the oversight and support that we are being provided, but also that we're providing to the school sites, our comprehensive testing program, and of course, community transmission rates. Next slide. So first, we're going to look at some data. We're presenting this to you in this format for the first time. And for the public that is listening, this is actually our dashboard that is now present on our website. And so any member of the public can go in and see this. We update this once a week to give you the most recent information. During the seven-day period of September third through September ninth, we had thirteen cases of COVID, sorry, sixteen cases of COVID in our district, three staff members, and thirteen students. That brought us to a total of fifty-two cases in the district since the beginning of this school year. We ran the calculations to figure the case rate in our district. We were really interested in, well, how does this compare to the rest of Santa Barbara County? And so we ran the calculations to figure the case rate in the district versus that of Santa Barbara County. But during the same seven-day timeframe, we saw an average daily case rate in our district of fifteen-point-five cases as compared to the most current county average of a daily case rate of seventeen-point-one. So we are a bit below the county average. Unfortunately, I was not able to pull out the South County daily average case rates to really compare apples to apples, but it gives you some information about where we are in comparison to the county. Next slide, please. So vaccination status is always important, and we're proud to say that that rate continues to climb as we work with our employees. Our employee vaccination report as of yesterday shows that eighty-six percent of our regular employees are fully vaccinated at this time, and another two percent are in the process of completing that process. A total of seventy or two percent have stated that they have no desire to be vaccinated. And we're still working with one hundred and thirty-four employees to secure their status report. We are confident that once we receive all of those responses that we're awaiting, and once those who are in process with their vaccinations have completed those, that we'll have a confirmed employee vaccination rate in excess of ninety percent, which, when you look at other areas, is excellent. Of course, we would always shooting for one hundred percent, but we will definitely be over ninety percent. Next slide. You. So I want to give you updates on testing and our vaccination plan. Because of the nationwide shortage of tests, we made the decision to focus on beginning our surveillance testing of students with our elementary schools because those students comprise 30% of our cases right now. So 30% of the student cases are our elementary school students. And obviously, they're unable to be tested or be vaccinated because of their age. So that testing, that surveillance testing began yesterday. As of this afternoon, we had the results for 129 students who had been tested yesterday and early today with one positive test being yielded from that 129 students. I want to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge, recognize the hard work of our elementary administrators, their office and health staff, our nurses, and our district coordinator Roxanna Stern for all of their hard work and commitment that it's taken to pull off this endeavor. It, it has been difficult, but they've been with it. They're sticking with it. And I think once we get through this first week and get our families in the system, in the computer system and, and find on, then, then it will go much smoother from there on. But they do this all while making their, well, regular work also happen. So I wanted to take the opportunity to thank them for that. We also, as we await an incoming shipment of tests, which we did here today, that the tests that we had ordered several weeks ago are now on their way, which is a good sign, which means we can continue to test, obviously, our unvaccinated and unconfirmed staff, but also our elementary students, and then add our unvaccinated secondary students into that testing. But while we await that large shipment, we're focusing on vaccinations in our secondary schools. We have really glad to say vaccination clinics scheduled beginning next week at Dos Pueblos High School, Santa Barbara High School, Belida Valley Junior High, La Cumbre Junior High, and Santa Barbara Junior High. These clinics are scheduled for both mornings and late afternoon, early evening, so that we can meet the needs of a variety of students and their families and make those more accessible to those who still need vaccination. Ms. Barnwell and Dr. Madrigal are working with Cottage Hospital to organize a Get Vaxxed campaign, and that includes parent education, a student TikTok competition, multimedia event, and other activities. In addition, later this week, we are going to begin collecting the vaccination verifications for all of our students ages 12 and up. This will allow us to better identify the students who might need quarantine in the case of close contacts. And that means those, that's because those who are vaccinated do not need to quarantine unless they are symptomatic. And so be, being able to more easily contact trace our students who are unvaccinated will help us immensely. It will also help us identify those who are eligible for the vaccination clinics, really encourage them to participate. I do want to share with the board that though we have not collected the vaccination rates for our students yet, that's upcoming. But based on 221 secondary students who have either tested positive or have been a close contact since August 16th, 69% of those students, of those 221 students are vaccinated. 31% are not. And obviously, we want that number up where our employees are, approaching 90%. But this is an encouraging number at this time. It exceeds the countywide rate for that age group. So I would love to be able to report back to you that, you know, we're approaching 75% next time. You know, when we get those numbers in, and then after our vaccination clinics be approaching 80%. But right now, we're, we think we're somewhere around 70% vaccinated.
Dr. Wagenek, I just want to clarify. You mentioned 221 students who are positive. Do you mean to say 221 who are in
I said positive or in close contact.
221 positive or in close contact?
Yes. Yes. Thank you for clarifying that. That's important. No, we do not have 221 positive students, thankfully. So that is an encouraging sign, but we will have harder data for you next time. Next slide, please. So beginning with this report, again, our 27th COVID board report, we want to focus on how state and national COVID-related news connects to our district. We'll start with LA Unified. LA Unified very boldly announced that by January 10th, 2022, all eligible students would be required to be vaccinated or transfer into an independent study program. And those requirements, they're rolling out those requirements for different groups, and those begin next month in October. We're going to be following this situation very closely as it rolls out in order to understand the implications for our own district and what districts around the state may be doing. LA Unified is, is creating this mandate under the auspices of the Constitution of the State of California in that school districts are charged with creating a safe learning environment for all students. We do know that in LA Unified, they have many, many charter schools that they share campuses with, that, that their students interact and so forth. And so because of that, they, they are looking to create the safest learning environment for their students. And then secondly, we have President Biden, who recently mandated that all federal workers be fully vaccinated and/or submit to weekly testing. We would like to think that President Biden saw what we were doing here and decided to take a page out of our book. But in all seriousness, I, I think this does validate the decisions that this board did take several months ago and signals that we were ahead of the curve. And, and we know that many other districts across the nation are, are following suit, and that is very encouraging. And then lastly, I want to point out just a data point that I found concerning. And that is that in the last week of August into early September, children represented nearly 30% of all cases reported that week in the United States, 30%. So COVID, which, you know, a year ago, we were wondering whether it would impact children or not. Clearly, this, this Delta variant and now the Iota variant are impacting children, and we're seeing that as well. Next slide, please. And then finally, this ties back into our elementary surveillance testing. We asked, we cannot test students in the surveillance program or, or even symptomatic testing without parent consent. And so we have been seeking the consent of our parents, and they do have to go online, sign up through Primary Health, and give us consent to do that testing. The consent completed as of about 30 minutes ago was 64%. It's really great because we were down around 35% on Sunday. Much of that is because of the efforts of school staff in reaching out to families to assist them with that signup process. We still have 36% of our families who have not completed that. I also want to note that our principals are having conversations with families who have concerns about the testing, answering their questions. There's a lot of information out there, as we know, and a lot of misinformation such as the swabs cause cancer because they have cancer-causing agents on them. Those, our swabs have nothing on them. They're like a Q-tip. The reagent is actually in the drops that are put on. So the students never come in contact with the reagent. So it's addressing questions like that and, and then working with the families as we go forward. So that completes my report, and I will now turn it over for questions or comments from the board. Thank you.
Dr. Wagner, before I ask for a public comment, I was just wondering if you could go back to the last slide and what is that number, 33,315?
That is the total enrollment of elementary students in our district. So 2,122 students. Their parent or guardian has consented. 1,193 have not yet consented for a grand total of 3,315.
Thank you for that clarification. Reminder to the board and to our community that this is a report item only, and no action will be taken by the board tonight. And so thank you very much, Dr. Wagenek. Ms. Trujillo, I believe there's at least one public comment on this item.
Evening, President Ford. Yes, we have one public comment on this item. Jamie Devon.
Hi there. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. So thanks for hearing me tonight. So I'm, I'm born and raised in Santa Barbara. I attended San Barbara Unified School District schools all through, through till high school. And my kids are actually third-generation Santa Barbarians. So we have a really big stake in this community, and we love it. I do have a few questions about what was spoken about tonight. The first one being, you mentioned in the, the report that we have, I think it was like 85 or 86% vaccination levels for teachers or staff members, and that the goal was 100%. You know, what I didn't hear was any mention of people that have had COVID and have recovered. And if that means anything, you know, you mentioned that the goal is to get to 100% vaccination. And actually, studies are showing that natural immunity from receiving, actually getting the virus is very robust and actually better than the vaccine-induced immunity. So I'd like to hear some, you know, thoughts around people that have already had COVID, and if that means anything, not only for the staff, but also for kids. A lot of kids and students have also had COVID and recovered, thankfully. And I think that that natural immunity is something that we need to consider, especially if you guys are going to be looking at mandating vaccines. And about the vaccines, I know you said you're not making any decisions tonight, but I did want to let you know, if you haven't read the Comernity FDA-approved vaccine insert, I highly recommend that you do. On that insert, in regard to the pediatric use, it says, "Safety and Effectiveness of Comernity and Individuals 16 through 17 Years of Age is Based on Safety and Effectiveness in This Age Group and in Adults, and the Safety and Effectiveness of Individuals Younger Than 16 of Age Have Not Been Established." So if we're going to be mandating it for 12-year-olds, there's not safety data established. It also says, if you read on, or in regards to myocarditis and pericarditis, that that is a concern. It's listed in the insert. And actually, there are now more cases of adolescents getting myocarditis than there are of children that have had bad outcomes with COVID. There is no such thing as a mild case of myocarditis. It is damage to the heart, which is not repairable. That is setting them up for a lifetime of potential heart problems. So if we are looking to mandate this vaccine, who will be taking on liability for children that will be harmed? Because that is a will. It's not an if, it's a will. It's already being shown in children that have already been vaccinated with this vaccine. It should always be a choice up to the parents. The trials are not going to be done until 2023 or 2024.
Thank you. President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. And now, board members, do you have any further questions or comments? I'll start with Ms. Munoz. Thank you. Ms. Sims-Mountain.
Just a comment to say thank you for everyone that's continued to do this work in this very contentious time and emotional time. And so we'll, we'll get there together, and we just want to make sure that we're listening to each other respectfully and know that we have a responsibility for each and every student here, and we're taking that into account. We're responsible for their safety and their health and so, but definitely appreciating all points of view. But in the end, it's about what we need to do in terms of keeping each and every one of our students safe. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Capps.
Yeah, thank you. I had a couple of questions. Thank you, Dr. Wagner. I especially appreciate the dashboard, which was a request I made at our last meeting, which is awesome that it's out there, and I'll help promote that because it's really important for everyone to be able to see how our case rate is going. So thank you for the transparency there. I had a couple of questions about the vaccine rate. And I, again, agree that we're definitely moving strongly in the right direction, but the 134 waiting response, I'd love a little more explanation there. I'm just curious how we can test those folks if we haven't even heard back from them about their vaccine status. So how does that work in terms of communication?
We, we have the names of those individuals, and their supervisors are responsible for letting them know each week that they need to test. And so we are, in a sense, considering them unvaccinated until we hear otherwise. And so they are required to test along with the vaccination in progress and those who are choosing not to be vaccinated.
So, oh yeah, Dr. Vecchio.
I also wanted to let the board know that I, my office is actually starting a campaign. We're going to actually get responses from the 134 people. We, we have had our sites following up, but we're from the HR office going to be getting responses from them or holding a in-person session where we get them to respond to their email link that lets us know their status.
Okay, so, so we feel pretty confident that we will get those. I just saw that when I saw a waiting response, it, it, it made me concerned that there's not a communication back and forth with these employees.
Yeah, we know who they are. So we do link the no responses to emails. And then I'll be following up to, to get responses from those individuals.
Thank you. Great. So just moving on, I just wanted to ask about, I had a bunch of questions for Susan Klein Rothschild. So I just, I'll ask her separately, but really about our county rates of hospitalization, because that's really the concern here is children, students who are, you know, now close to 50, who have tested positive for COVID since the school year, which is dramatically higher than it was in the spring. And we know that's related to Delta. We also know that's related to our vaccination rates. And so I was able to find out on the county dashboard that five children have been hospitalized in the county in August, which, again, I didn't, I couldn't find the date. I was going to ask Susan Klein Rothschild, how do you compare that to June? I would imagine that's quite higher, potentially even five higher, and that it's likely that all five of those, and those children were unvaccinated. So I'm just looking to you to see if you have any, shed any light on this.
Say is, yes, I will confirm with you that we had such low rates of COVID in June. I can't imagine that there would have been five children hospitalized. But I talk with the principals when they have positive student cases, and none of the principals have reported to me any hospitalizations for our own students. But certainly, I can check back on that. And I know that the principals stay in contact with the parents when, when children are ill.
Sure. Well, I think that's a, the concern here is that, as we've discussed and has been documented, that this Delta variant unfortunately is targeting children because those under 12 cannot yet be vaccinated. So we really have to be as militant and protective of these children as we can, as, as our those under twelve cannot yet be vaccinated. So we really have to be as militant and protective of these children as we can as is our mandate. Wanted to ask you, and so what what that prompted me when I tried to find, you know, I'd love to know our hospitalization rates for our for our students, absolutely. But the fact that we have five children hospitalized in August, most of whom we can assume were unvaccinated. I'm trying to get that verified. But I looked up the national numbers, just to share with my colleagues, child hospitalization rates are five times higher in August than June nationally. So that's alarming. And hospitalization rates among unvaccinated adolescents was ten times higher. So than than those who are vaccinated. So certainly, we know the key is vaccinating ourselves, vaccinating our those children who are eligible. And thanks for the efforts in that regard. I wanted to ask about outbreaks as my last question because we've done such a tremendous job. We know that kids are bringing COVID into our schools because their parents are or whoever however they're getting it. But what I'm so proud of, I know it's a very high bar, is last meeting you reported that there has not been a spread from student to student or from staff member to student, which again, just validates how hard everyone is working in those classrooms on our campuses. Is that still the case?
Our current currently, we don't have any known transmissions. We do have one classroom in one school that we're watching right now and have shared that information as required with with Santa Barbara County Public Health. Because there we're required to report anytime there are three or more active cases in any one school. And so we this week reported that to Public Health. And so we're watching that. But we still don't know if it was circumstantial or if there was transmission in this school.
But we certainly have nothing like we read about, you know, in the the teacher in Marin who was unvaccinated, didn't wear a mask. Half her students got COVID and then, you know, a quarter of the parents got COVID. We have not seen any sort of outbreak. And that again, just speaks to how hard everyone's working. And I just want to applaud those efforts. We do it every meeting, but we have to keep saying it because it's so hard. I was happy to attend the back to school nights and, you know, it's just remarkable to hear from school leadership, from teachers, from, you know, parents who are super involved, just all of the efforts that are going into trying to keep our kids in school. But, you know, we hear that message and we just have to keep repeating it because that is the goal is we understand all that's been lost because of this pandemic. But now, I mean, I just have to say I'm a bit discouraged hearing about all that continues to be lost. The fact that semi camp is potentially going to be canceled for so many kids or math clubs and extracurriculars and some of these back to schools, you know, principals are doing their best to put a good face on it all, but it just continues to this pandemic because of our vaccination rates continues to harm our children. And I just see that as a parent, I see it. And then I get, as we all do, the emails that are just full of misinformation. And if you click the link, it's an article, it's not even an article. It's a bogus news site. And I think what what kind of signal is that to our children? That we're relying on bogus information and they're the ones being harmed. So I'm feeling it today after just being surrounded by parents and teachers and staff and students. And these the data just shows everyone's doing their part. They're working hard, yet we are still here where we are with five children in our county in the hospital and fifty-some cases in our schools. And we can change that. And finding information from a bizarre site or Facebook or social media doesn't cut it. What cuts it is listening to science and doing the right thing. So we're not still here having these same conversations in October, November, December, January. Our kids are just losing out on too much. And I hope that people do their part because clearly we're all doing ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. Ms. Albers, please.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Dr. Wagnick, for all your information. I I have personally done a lot of those trainings that you mentioned, and I know that it takes so much time. And I want to thank you and your staff, everybody at the sites at the district level that is working so hard in coordinating this effort. And I also want to assure the parents, keep sending your children to school. It's safe to go to school. Kids belong at school. As a board, I know that all of us, we are committed to keep kids in school as safely as possible. So I want to reassure all the parents that we're doing everything we can to do that. And also to the staff members that we're doing everything we can to keep you safe as well. And then I'm going to have a couple of asks of you and of Dr. Maldonado and your team is I like us to do more of a marketing campaign. I see you're doing all this excellent work about the vaccine clinics at Dos Pueblos, Lacumbra, Galita Valley. And I want to get the word out. I want to make sure everybody knows that this is happening. And I know that the district uses Parent Square. And I like us to do one more thing. I like us, the parents, to get the phone calls, you know, the old calls that we used to use a long time ago, that I would come home and I would find a message from my kid's school principal. Somebody from the school that the parents are familiar with, that the students are familiar with, that calls and says, remember, we are having the clinic tomorrow or what have you, however time. I know last week, Dr. Maldonado was at Radio Bronco giving a message. I like us to make contact, Ms. Barnwell, with Telemundo. Let's get the word out. And if there's any way that I might be of assistance, I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to help whatever I can do to get the word out. I do think that if we are a little bit more aggressive, and I know you're doing a lot. I know, I know, I know, and I acknowledge that. And if we got a little bit more aggressive, that we can get more people vaccinated. Also, the one hundred and thirty-four employees, Dr. Beck, I appreciate that you're taking that extra step. And maybe even a phone call from from your staff to those members saying we need a response by such and such date. That marketing campaign, I think it's it's really going to help us because you're doing a lot, a lot that you're doing. And in regards to reaching herd immunity, I was doing a lot of reading. And one of the examples that I came across was with polio. Polio never reached herd immunity. How it was controlled, it was because of the vaccines. We fighting against Delta. We're fighting another variant. We are keep fighting. It's not about the mandates. It's not. It's about health. It's about safety. And it's about keeping the kids in school. So thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. And Mr. Kelly.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have a few questions. First, regarding student vaccine statistics. How do you? How are you planning on going about collecting these statistics from students?
Great question. So Mr. Rouse and I have been working together. He has identified the best way to go. We were looking at using iPass because you all have that and you're used to it. However, iPass, which has many platforms within Prices Go, does not currently provide Spanish in for that, for the vaccination verification. So that immediately was out. So Mr. Rouse is working to collect put together a system, exactly what we did with staff, which was to upload a copy of our vaccination card or CDPH verification into the system, which in that case was Munis, but now we'll be using Aries. So it'll be uploaded into Aries. And I don't know, Mr. Rouse, do you want to add anything to that or if I covered it? Okay, so we'll be using Aries and it will be. And we're going to count on you, Mr. Kelly, to help us get the word on out on how to do that. I think there's a maybe a TikTok in your future.
Yes, I would love to. I'm excited to see how that TikTok TikTok campaign will go. Hopefully, some board members will join me in making them. That would be entertaining. You mentioned iPass. I know firsthand, I I see a lot of students that either don't do iPass prior to school and just go to school and they don't check in on campus. How are we planning on enforcing that? Because I know I see it all the time where students just go to class and they don't check in at school with their iPass completed.
That I would have to check in with Dr. Glazer and you could certainly ask her at the larger high schools. That's very difficult. So the, you know, what we have asked those high schools to do is to check in later and prepare that against attendance and then go physically to the student and ask them to check in. And so I would recommend for you that you ask Dr. Glazer if that practice is in place.
Thank you so much. And then one more clarifying question. When we're speaking about children, is that under twelve? I know we mentioned the hospitalizations.
Right. So that's up through age seventeen is considered in terms of medical terms. That's children, pediatrics.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, thanks, board members. I have a couple of comments and questions. First of all, Dr. Wagnit, the four percent that aren't interested in getting vaccinations, are they already participating in weekly testing?
Yes, and we looking for the word, but we re-upped our efforts on that last week. So as of now, they're continuing because we had folks coming back who were out in the summer and so forth. But yes, they'll be testing every week.
Okay, great. I'm also very interested in the implications and the legality for the board about mandating any further vaccinations. And so I'd love to have us, Dr. Maldonado, consider this as a possible discussion item in the future as we find out more about the mandate. And in particular, the implications it has for our board to to make that kind of decision. I agree with all my fellow and sister board members that vaccinations are masking and masking are the key. And I'm also so happy to have heard today that the air filters have arrived for all the classrooms and offices at our school. So congratulations and thank you to those who made that happen. Dr. Maldonado, I just have a question for you because the buck stops at the top and just wonder if you would be willing to make a statement. Do you feel like the board should feel very confident we're on the right track of doing everything we can to ensure the safety of our staff and students?
Thank you for that. And I do want to say we are still in a pandemic. I wanted to start with that and I want to reemphasize that. This is not like a zero sum game. We're going to get to a hundred percent. Everybody will be safe. The Delta virus really threw a wrench in everything that I think we were thinking about in terms of opening school, of what these were going to work like. And we have found ourselves become having to become more and more restrictive as we monitor the cases. So we started off very open. We've had to sort of put more guardrails in as we see cases arise, you know, encouraging, we've been encouraging our principals, for example, to encourage outdoor mask wearing at these large football games and events, even though it's not required by public health. So I do think that we have a lot of great mitigation steps in place. I do recognize that some of these we cannot enforce without having some sort of mandate from other, the county public, the state public health, the board or others who do have that legal authority to say that we need to tell us if you're vaccinated or not, for example, with our employees in having policies that will support that. I do get concerned about the Delta virus also with the cases when it comes to children. That was, as I reported at our last board meeting, that was something that we did not anticipate to be such such a case. I don't think we even had many reports where we talked about children getting COVID. So it's a it's a different situation. I do think the layers of mitigation are working, but the way that we're responding has also become more complex with vaccinated or unvaccinated, how long they were in close contact or not, whether they're symptomatic or not symptomatic. So there's a lot of layers to the way we respond that are also taking up a lot of staff time. And I think that I need to just report to this board and be very open and transparent with everyone, which is why we have our data dashboard, that while we continue to remain optimistic, we're not ignoring the brutal facts. And as much as I think every staff member is doing everything humanly possible to to keep COVID out, we want to continue to encourage all the layers of mitigation. And as Dr. Wagnick said, continue to explore other options that we may be able to enforce.
Thank you so much. I think we're we're all, as we've tried to say, but we will continue to remind you of our gratitude to you and your staff. With that, board members, it's time for us to return back to board comments and correspondence. So I'll stop, start with Ms. Munoz, please.
Thank you, President Ford. Just to, you know, just to reinforce also in terms of the, you know, the COVID report and back to school. I also have been very appreciative of all the staff and cabinet efforts in terms of, you know, back to school, doing this as safely as we possibly can, having the excitement, but at the same time, you know, very much the awareness as as Ms. Capps and and my fellow board members also mentioned. And having the public understand that we're concerned, bottom line, you know, the main thing is is the children, is the safety of our children, whether they be, you know, six years old, eighteen years old and such. Is that, you know, we are looking at this as as monitoring it as much as we can and just looking at the overall picture. Like, we're trying to get through the school year and the future in a safe manner. I've certainly seen, you know, hospitalizations at the pediatric unit when I worked there for years and and just affected, you know, saw that. And and that was prior to this pandemic. And just, you know, reinforcing, I appreciate everyone's interest in this and also, you know, for the parents and the public to understand that we're about, Santa Barbara Unified is about our students and taking care of them and also all of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sims-Mountain, please.
Yes, thank you, President Ford. You know, I said, and I think about most of my comments were made during the presentation. But I first just also want to acknowledge our students and say thank you for the hard work that they're doing in between decisions that are made above them, but just working and being that. So I want to shout, do a shout out and say thank you to our students who continue to 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 come to school, work hard in the midst of all the things that decisions that are being around them and for them. And then secondly, I just want to acknowledge too, it is such a privilege to be a board member as well as a huge responsibility to do that. And I just want to appreciate this district in terms of the approach that we take, that we really are student centered from every aspect, do it, you know, equity and all those things. It's really important. And in our students, when I say the privilege is we have the student performances today, what a privilege to be able to do that. What is, you know, a feel-good story in the midst of all the things that are, you know, that we're going through. And and that that reminds me of why we're here. And that's the students and they and they do that. And the little one, of course, the little one just took my heart. So you know that from the very beginning. So I want to certainly say thank you to those student performers who were there today. I don't have much to say other than to say thank you to, again, to the students who are in the midst of this. And I know that we are here and collectively, collectively, we will get this together. And those that perhaps aren't there in terms of everybody on the same page getting vaccinations for that they're, that's their right, that's their opinion in terms of that. I think it's really important to respect that. So we don't further divide. We have unvaccinated versus vaccinated. It's all of us in terms of when we see our children in hospitals, when we see our, when we see our friends, our loved ones in there. So we're all here collectively to do this. And in this spot where we we get to lead from the beginning and centered in terms of our students. And and I just can't say enough about the respectability. You know, I said at the also at the county level meetings and to see that the just the indecency that we have against each other. And we're not hearing each other if we're going to be disrespectful to each other. And we're not hearing each other if we're going to be disrespectful to each other. So I think it's really important to do that. And again, I, I just want to say what a privilege and absolutely a responsibility and accountability to be, to be a leader in this time. And that's exactly what we need. And I think we're doing that as a board and I think we're doing that as a district. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Ms. Capps.
Thank you. I wanted to publicly acknowledge Steve Bizzolini's retirement. I had just such an enjoyable and productive time working with him over the last few years in this role. The man is unflappable and works so hard and keeps everything, all these plates spinning in the air. You throw out him COVID, you throw out him air purifiers, you throw out him sustainability. And I just feel as, I just want to acknowledge how much I valued him as a leader in this district. And along with the many things that he did long prior to me being a board member, he will leave with a legacy of working in a team to transition this district to a sustainable district. One which was 0% reliant on fossil fuels. Excuse me, 0% reliant on alternatives, 100% on fossil fuels to one that will soon be, thanks to his hard work, 94% reliant on alternatives rather than fossil. So that is a huge legacy for generations here in Santa Barbara. I just wanted to say thank you to Steve. And also, since we last met, we celebrated Labor Day and I just wanted to echo the tribute that Dr. Maldonado did to one of our workers because on Labor Day, I celebrated with some of our other elected officials in this area. Just gave a lot of time to thinking about the people who make our community work, who work hard. And where my mind went is because, is to our food service workers and to people like Casidro Duarte. So, so nice to hear more about one of our food service workers. So many workers, all of our workers deserve acknowledgement. But to think about what food service workers have done in particular during this pandemic by keeping families, keeping kids well-fed and nourished and risking their own health to do so. So thanks for that tribute and just acknowledging Labor Day this last weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. And Solves, please.
Since we last met, I had the privilege of attending a few back-to-school nights and also to be in person on campus and some schools. And I, I have to say, that feeling that you get when you're at the campus, I mean, there's just no comparison. When you're there around the students, around the teachers, the admin, and you feel the emphasis on some of those students. It's, it just really brings everything home. It just brings everything to know that this is why we do what we do every single day. And that's why it matters so much to those students. And also, at the same time, I realize that there's a lot of challenges being faced by some of our students, not just academically, but social, emotional challenges that are being faced. And that we as a district, we also have that charge, that responsibility to tend to these issues as well. So I'm, I'm really, I have to say, I'm really proud of the supports that we have in place for this, students for these challenges. And I also know that there's work for us to be done in that area. So again, I want to thank the school staff, the students that Ms. Sims-Moten mentioned, and the parents and everyone that is involved in this effort because this truly is a community effort. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And I have a few comments also before our student, Mr. Kelly, will have his comments. First of all, I agree with a couple of my fellow board members. I hope the long Labor Day weekend gave everyone an opportunity to think about the importance of workers in our country, especially at a time when the challenges posed by COVID-19 have greatly changed the landscape of the working world for so many Americans. Last Saturday was also Patriot Day. As Dr. Maldonado said, when we remember the tragedy of 9/11 and focus on how we came together as a country to help heal each other at such a sad and terrible time, I'm wishing for that for us now. And also, I want to recognize that this Thursday is Yom Kippur for the Jewish faith. We have many Jewish students in our district. And although school will be in session, it's important to recognize this holiest holiday of atonement and repentance. I'm also happy to report that I attended back-to-school nights for Cleveland and for Franklin. And I'm also grateful for the way the staff and the principals pivoted from in-person events to Zoom events as they worked hard to not only share the plans for the year, but also clarify to the parents all the ways that we're working to keep the staff and students safe and healthy this year. And today, I was also lucky enough to be invited with Ms. Alvarez to a presentation from some San Marcos students, supported by their teacher Nicole Powers and school leaders on the rationale and suggestions for a revised district dress code. It was a really intelligent and powerful presentation. And dozens of students were also in attendance, as well as district representatives, as I said, Ms. Alvarado, Dr. Maldonado, and Dr. Wagonette. Oh, what did I just say? Oh, it's Alvarado. Sorry, Alvarez. It's what happens when you're typing too fast. And finally, I must share my gratitude for the remembrance and the honoring of Sam Cunningham, Santa Barbara High School, class of 1969. You know, he was a friend and classmate of mine at Friday night's football game between San Marcos and Santa Barbara. Special thanks go to Principal Simmons and her team. It was very touching and wonderful. Sam Cunningham was not only a superior athlete, one who distinguished himself throughout his lifetime at Franklin, Santa Barbara Junior High School, and of course, Santa Barbara High, but also at USC and in the NFL. But more important to me, Sam was a stellar person, modest, kind, gentle, and gracious always. He always focused on the team, not on himself alone. The class of 1969 is sponsoring a memorial scholarship fund in Sam's name. So please stay tuned for information on how you can contribute to this fund too. And with that, I'll turn the report over to our student board member, Mr. Kelly.
Hello, everyone. I'd just like to start out by saying how happy I am to be here and how grateful I am that this position even exists. I cannot reiterate enough how important it is to get student feedback and student opinion in all these important decisions. I'd also like to reiterate how moving forward, I want mental health to be my number one cause. So throughout the week or throughout the past week, since the recent board meeting, I've been talking to students about their mental health needs and what they'd like to see in schools. I've also been working on an advisory board along with Superintendent Maldonado. And we were working on a superintendent slash student board member advisory board with students. And I would also like to just read, just, I don't know, whatever. Sorry. Okay, so I'm just getting, I don't know. Okay. Anyway, I would also like to encourage students to become vaccinated. I think that's a huge priority as we've seen in the COVID-19 report, as well as all the comments made by other board members. I think it is vital to return to normalcy that students are vaccinated. Like someone said, polio didn't reach herd immunity, but vaccines will be the way that we will combat this virus. And just general concerns from students that I've heard in the past weeks are the amount of lunchtime, 30 minutes. I know there's been a lot of buzz around that. And revising the dress code to be more appropriate with the times. So those are the two major concerns aside from mental health that I've been hearing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kelly. I, I also just want to mention for everyone that Dawson is applying to become a member of the State Board of Education in his senior year for next year. And I must say that I, I'm certain you all would agree with me that there would be no finer board member to be chosen for that. So no matter whether he gets it or not, let's hear it for Dawson. So at this time, we're on to item number nine. And it is the opportunity for comments from the public about items that are not on the agenda for this evening. Each speaker is allotted three minutes each tonight. Ms. Trujillo, could you please introduce our public comments addressing items that are not on the agenda?
Thank you, President Ford. We have two public comment on this item, Mark Alvarado and John Morse. I will begin with Mark Alvarado.
Good evening, Board Chair Ford and, and Board members and Dr. Maldonado. I'm calling in today to kind of piggyback on Representative Ford's comments on Sam Cunningham. I'm close to the family and I've been talking to his younger brother Anthony. And they are so honored by what happened at the high school on Friday at the San Marcos game and then the idea of the scholarship fund. But I'm calling to advocate that Santa Barbara High School retired his jersey number 34. I think it's appropriate. All the accolades that Ms. Ford described also include Sam breaking the color barrier, playing against Alabama back at a time when Alabama didn't have any black athletes on their football team. And when the coach saw Sam play, he started recruiting black athletes right after that. The four touchdowns that Sam scored in the Rose Bowl against Ohio State are, are national and worldwide achievements that have really put Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara High School on the map. Being a neighborhood kid growing up on the east side, you can imagine Sam was our hero. I was fortunate to play with his younger brother Randall, and so I got to know Sam. And the last time I saw Sam, that smile that Ms. Ford spoke about just resonated as it just represented everything about Santa Barbara and about our upbringing and athletics and community. And I just wanted to just throw that out there. I don't know what the process is. But if anyhow, somebody could get ahold of me and let me know how we could make this a reality, petitions. I'm looking forward to seeing if we can get number 34 at Santa Barbara High School retired on behalf of Sam Cunningham. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Morse.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you. My name's John Morse. I'm a member of Fair Education Santa Barbara. There's been quite a bit of misinformation put out about our organization. I'd like to set the record straight on some of it. I've been called a white supremacist and I'm not offended by this. I'm more amused by it. And I'll let my actions speak for themselves. As part of Fair Education Santa Barbara, I helped to draft the Williams Act complaints about the deplorable conditions in the restrooms at Santa Barbara High School. Does that make me a white supremacist? Part of Fair Education Santa Barbara, we advocate for programs that work that all students, white and non-white, can get a decent education and the life skills necessary to manage their affairs after they graduate. Does that make me a white supremacist? Fair Education has set up learning pods for Hispanic children to teach them literacy. Is that work of white supremacists? And we advocate that all Hispanic children have a chance to learn English as early as possible so they can function in an English-speaking world. My children are bilingual. They've been speaking French since they were babies and I can tell you they're little sponges at that age. And it's much, much easier to learn a second language at an early age. Also, we advocate that you speech phonics because phonics is basically the same in both English and Spanish, except for a few letters like J and double L. Fair Education, we were also the first, if not among the first, the first to challenge the teaching of critical race theory in schools, regardless of its name. Our lawsuit is now pending in the Court of Appeals and we anticipate a ruling which will prevent the school district from any longer funneling money to their friends without competitive bidding. That will be a benefit to everybody, except perhaps to friends. And we strongly oppose critical race theory because we believe it is toxic, divisive, and counterproductive. It is toxic to teach children to hate one another based on the color of their skin or to be ashamed of them have the color of their skin regardless what it is. We believe it's divisive to teach children that they should not talk to other children or learn to know other children because they're different from they are. We believe it's counterproductive to teach children that they are victims with no hope of getting any better. And so we advocate that we make things better for all children, not just for some children.
Thank you. And President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Board members, we move on to the acceptance of donations now, and we have two donations, I believe, tonight. May I have a motion to approve the donations with our gratitude? Ms. Alvarez, and a second?
Second.
Ms. Capps, thank you. Board members, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You think we should accept them too? Excellent. The donations have been accepted unanimously. And now on to the consent agenda. This is where we approve items that are considered routine and are not likely to cause any discussion. Dr. Maldonado and her staff have recommended that the board approves all of the consent agenda items. And we also had an opportunity to consider and ask questions about these items before tonight. So first, Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on the consent agenda items?
Thank you, President Ford. We do have one public comment on item I-7, Arcelia Ascension.
Good evening, Board President, fellow school board members, and Dr. Maldonado. My name is Arcelia Ascension. I am the Associate Director at Standing Together to End Sexual Assault, STESA. I want to encourage your affirmative vote today to establish an MOU between STESA and the school district. First, I want to thank the staff at Santa Barbara Unified School District, in particular, Dr. Fran Wagonette and Dr. Patricia Madrigal. We met to share about STESA's knowledge and expertise in the field of sexual assault prevention programming for youth. We discuss curriculum content from healthy boundaries to respect. I'm excited about the formal partnership with the school district for the new school year and the years to come. STESA will be part of the larger safety net of services for students and their families. We cannot do this work alone. I applaud the school district for prioritizing community organizations like STESA with expertise in the field of trauma-informed care and programming. We understand that it takes a community for students to feel safe, supported, and affirmed in their school spaces. STESA is poised to be a good partner with the school district. We understand that students need to feel connected to caring adults, be that a teacher, a counselor, or facility staff to foster resilience. STESA's staff is compassionate and are ready to be a support system for students. Thank you for your vote of confidence and support of the MOU between STESA and the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. So before I call for a motion, Board members, or Dr. Maldonado, are there any items on the consent agenda that require more information, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in items E-2 through E-19? Ms. Munoz, thank you. And a second, Ms. Sims-Moten? Perfect. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda passes unanimously. It is now time for our public hearings tonight. So I will go to G1. Item G1 is the second public hearing regarding the composition of district trustee areas. I'm calling this hearing to order. Dr. Maldonado, are there any comments or presentations from you or business services tonight on this item?
I believe we have Justin Rich with us. He's just going to go over the timeline one more time for not just this public hearing for, for the future. Mr. Rich, are you with us? Or Sandra, can you?
Dr. Maldonado, he is not online at this time.
Thank you. I just want to say then that people can also go to our website to find out more information about the upcoming dates and the timeline for this item.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments related to this hearing?
No public comment.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on diste, district trustee areas. And we'll move on to the second public. and we'll move on to the second public hearing today, which is an annual state requirement regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for elementary and secondary schools. I'm calling this hearing to order. Dr. Maldonado, are there any comments or presentation from you or business services?
We do not have a presentation.
Thank you. The board has reviewed these materials. Mr. Hill, are there any public comments related to this hearing?
No public comment.
Okay, so at this time, I will close the second public hearing tonight, this one on the sufficiency of instructional materials and we will move on to the action agenda. Action agenda, item number one. For action agenda one, to approve the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year unaudited actuels, I will turn this item over to business services for comment and review. Mr. Hernandez.
Board and Dr. Maldonado, this is the review of the two thousand twenty-one unaudited actuels. Throughout the year, we report budgets and there are always estimated budgets, estimated revenue, estimated costs. And then as the year goes by, they become more actual until we get to the end of the year and we are now bringing forward what we actually closed the books at. So these are actual expenditures, not expenses and the revenue that was received. The reason we call it unaudited actuels is because the books are closed, but they haven't been reviewed by our auditors yet. And that will happen in the next couple of months and then it becomes fully official, the true number. The auditors may find some sort of adjustment that needs to occur, but typically that doesn't happen. Okay, so next slide. So updates in the following funding sources. I'll report about federal, state, and local and also what our actual expenditures ended up being at the end of the year. Next slide, please. Okay, so this one is showing what the unrestricted and the restricted revenues are. The first, the left side is the estimated actuels. Those were the the estimated numbers that we thought we would receive our revenue and that was determined at adopted budget. When we first do our very first budget. So the other side, the right side of the screen then, is where we ended up our actuels. So as you can see, we ended up, we estimated we would receive about two hundred million dollars in revenue and we ended up at a hundred ninety-eight point nine in our actuels. And the largest part of that, the dark blue, is our property taxes and our LCFF sources. So we came in pretty close there and we estimated that we would get about a hundred forty-five point nine million dollars and it came in a little bit more than that, just slightly more. And that's pretty close. When we're talking about a two hundred million dollar budget, we were only off by eighty-nine K. So it's pretty good. The red bar there is the federal revenue. So on the adopted budget side, it was eighteen point eight million and we ended up at fifteen point eight. So the reason that that went down with the federal revenue, what happens is if you haven't spent all of your federal revenue by the end of the year, you have to close it out and then project it forward into the next year. So that's what that reduced amount is. Let's see. The state ended up approximately nine hundred K higher due to additional state relief funds, lottery, and those sort of expenditures, revenues. We also had local revenue that ended up two hundred and three K higher. Part of that was due to an increase in SELPA, which is your special education funds, and our redevelopment agency revenue. So both of those came in higher. Bottom line, we ended up receiving one point eight million dollars less in the adopted budget than we did. The adopted budget was a one point eight million dollars higher than where we ended up with our actuels. But again, part of that is the federal funding, which has been just re-projected into twenty-one, twenty-two.
Ms. Alvarez, can I ask you a question on that, the federal in specific? So
Yes.
meaning that we didn't get it? Or we didn't need it? So what is, I mean?
We didn't spend it. So federal funding is kind of interesting. A lot of it is you have to spend it before you get it. So in this case, we didn't spend all of the federal funding by the end of the year. So we just kind of roll that, we re-projected again in the next year. So it will bring that forward until twenty-one, twenty-two, this current year.
Okay. So were there any services that we didn't able to provide as a result of not spending it?
Um. We did have some. Oops, my slide went off. Okay. And so some of our unspent funds and projects that we had to defer to upcoming years. And a lot of it wasn't necessarily in the federal area, but we had some things like transportation that would have been in the state side of things that we didn't spend as much especially in transportation and that, and also maintenance and those kinds of things that we had to defer. So any of those items that we would have used federal funding for, we had to defer because of COVID.
Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
In the federal revenue, it doesn't mean that our allocation has changed. We're still getting the same amount. What you're saying is that we're going to spend it in future years.
Yes.
And I know that there's deadlines to spend this federal fund, so I'm sure you're aware of and you're keeping track to make sure that we spend it when we're supposed to spend it.
Yes, correct. You know, some of them like we have ESER one, two, and three. We have those kinds of things that we would, if we didn't spend it all, we could roll it into the next year. I have also online Lacy Preston and she is our Director of Fiscal. And Lacy, is there anything you want to add to any of that? I don't know if you can hear her.
Not at the moment. Everything that everyone has said is accurate. You know, we have received the revenue. It's just we can't record it as revenue until we have the corresponding expenditure. So it's moved to the balance sheet, which I know is really, I'm getting into big accounting terms, but we have the cash. It's kind of moved to the balance sheet and like Kim said, we'll be spending the dollars in the next couple of years.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Please go ahead and continue.
Thank you. Okay, so next slide. Yes, thank you. So now we're talking about the expenditures. We just talked about the revenue. Now we're talking about the expenditures. So due to the exceptionally challenging COVID year, we also spent less than we had expected to spend and that makes sense. One of the things I just mentioned was transportation, of course, is one of the expenditures that we weren't able to provide. And so again, the left side is the adopted budget and the right is where we ended up. So the dark blue here represents salaries and benefits. So that's, you can see that that's the majority of our expenditures is people, our staff. So it is actually over eighty percent of our total expenditures. We did spend two point eight million dollars less than we projected. Certificated salaries increased some due to the spending of the fed, federal and state relief funds for the summer of learning. But there were also lots of decreases, decreases in our instructional staff support, decreases in the substitutes that we sometimes provide, custodial, parent educators, after-school staff, federal title programs, and all of these were decreased due to the fact that we were distance learning most of the year. The red bar is books and supplies, which also decreased a lot due to remote learning. The yellow bar is travel, conferences, operating costs, and of course, these all decreased as well. No one was traveling. Most conferences were online. But the largest reductions in operating costs were the drop in transportation of our students. Reduction in school site repairs, the normal maintenance of, you know, wear and tear of our facilities and regular departmental expenses. The last section is green and it's for all other costs. And this is generally where we have our transferring of expenditures from one place to another. And the reduction here is mostly due to reductions in costs in child development, food services, and special education. And I'll speak about these on the next slide. Next slide, please. There we go. Okay, so contributions and transfers. So we have three areas where most school districts have the same sort of situation where we need to contribute or transfer money from the general fund to pay for some of these areas. And the reason that we need to do that is because they're not fully funded on their own. Special education. Providing special education is a federal requirement that has never been fully funded by the federal government. Instead, it is paid for in a three-tiered system, is paid for by the federal government, the state, and also the school districts. This means that there is always going to be a contribution from our general fund to pay for the costs of students with IEPs. At adopted budget, we projected that the general fund contribution would be two point three million dollars higher than it turned out to be. Partially because SELPA provided more funding and because the regional program costs for our students decreased. The additional funding came from the fact that the state increased the amount that they were paying to SELPAs for students. Another contribution that generally requires a transfer of money from the general fund is to the cafeteria fund, Fund thirteen. This is our meal plan. This is where we feed all of our students. The funding we received does not cover the cost of our meals that we provide by scratch. This year, one point six, almost one point seven million dollars of CARES funds as well as four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars from the state learning loss were used to offset the deficit. So we didn't have to dip into the general fund for that. Plus, we received federal seamless summer funding. And we went a little step further by reducing costs by keeping hiring tight and strictly monitoring all of our costs for food services. Going forward into the next couple of years, we do have ESER funding that will be applied to food services to help keep the general ed contributions down. The general, the general fund. So and then the last one is the Child Development Fund, Fund twelve, and it's a state grant. This is normally based on attendance, but for this particular year, the the calculation was changed for twenty-twenty-one to equal expenditures. So instead of going based on attendance, it was actually based on what we spent. So that meant that the state reimbursed us for the difference that we normally have to go into our general fund to pay for. So as you can see, the difference here is four point, almost four point four million dollars that we didn't have to use general fund money as a contribution for these elements. Next slide, please. Okay. So I just kind of wanted to show you some of the areas where we use our federal and state relief funding. This is, you know, we always have to think of this as one-time funding that, you know, we're really happy to receive, but it's, you know, doesn't go much further than this. We have to be careful with it. So this is COVID relief funding and most of it, as you can see, was spent for instructional needs. Mostly for distance learning and making sure that all of our students had access to technology, materials, and their teachers, even if it was online. The second little blurb down there is counseling services and outreach. The counseling was providing mental health services to all students. The really tiny, thin one, the third one over, is transportation. And we didn't receive any money from the state for transportation. But we did receive eighty-six, eighty-six K from the federal government for part of the year for transportation. Food services, both state and federal dollars were received to feed all students. We had some money for PPE, instructional support, admin, and testing that came from the federal government to make sure that all of our staff and students were safe to come back to school. Okay, next slide. And Lacy, I'll let you take this one.
Thank you. We bring this chart to you each time to show the ending balances for the year and the district's reserves. I want to quickly note that the state requires us to hold three percent in reserve for economic uncertainties. And this is calculated based on the total expenditures in the general fund. We also have a board policy thirty-one hundred where we further that minimum percentage to ten percent for economic uncertainties. So our goal is to have a reserve of at least ten percent. With that said, let's focus on the two thousand twenty-one column right in the middle of the chart. The number at the bottom of the yellow section is the unrestricted ending fund balance. The difference between the prior year and where we ended is due to the surplus caused by our revenues exceeding all of our expenditures for twenty-twenty-one. So it's increasing because we did not spend as much as we brought in. That number is over twenty-two million dollars. It is higher than past years due to all of the reasons that we have previously mentioned. For twenty-twenty-one, the unrestricted general fund reserve is at twelve point one percent. So we are currently above the ten percent just with our unrestricted general fund reserve. Let's move on to the purple section, which is the restricted general fund in the ending balance. The increase on the restricted side is mostly due to state relief funds that we have received and will be spent over the next couple of years. I'll quickly add that if you want to see a full list of all the funding sources that make up the restricted ending fund balance, that information can be found on page forty-one of the narrative. This leaves us with the final section, the green section. This is referred to as the special reserve fund or like we tend to call it the district savings account. So these funds are also held for economic uncertainties. Anytime that we receive money above and beyond what we were expecting, we like to move it over to this, to what we call the savings account, to kind of save for a rainy day in case we need it. When this is combined with the unrestricted ending fund balance, there is a total of all reserves of nineteen point six seven percent. So we are well above at the moment, above our ten percent minimum requirement. So I just want to quickly add that the next three columns that are, that have underneath it projected years, those have not been updated since adopted budget. The adopted budget that we brought to the board in June, those numbers will be adjusted with the most current information will be updated for the first interim budget report. So that's something that we will discuss in December. So that's all I have on this slide. So now we can move on to the last slide, which will be for any additional questions that the board members may have.
Ms. Munoz, Mr. Hill, are there any public comments on this item?
No public comment.
Okay, great. Then we will open it up to board questions and comments. Ms. Alvarez, please.
On slide number five, on the contributions, the general fund contributions to special ed and to Fund thirteen and Fund twelve. In our multi-year projections, Ms. Hernandez? In our multi-year projections, uh, Ms. Hernandez, are we projecting those same amounts of contribution? I know that our special ed revenue is increasing this year. Have you, I'm sure you've already taken that into consideration.
So currently, um, as Lacey said, we are not projecting yet into those out years. But when we go to first interim, we definitely will, um, we'll take all those things into consideration.
Thank you. And also as you start working in December, when you bring us the first interim. Uh, our contribution to Fund Thirteen this coming year, as you know, will be getting one-time monies from the state for, for food services. Which could be used for facilities improvement and it could also be used for the price of meal, for the cost of meals. So I'm wondering, uh, actually I'd like for you to include that in your presentation at first interim. Uh, what's is the, uh, our allocation and what is your suggestion of how to use those monies for perhaps? We can use them towards this contribution for food services. And, um, then also for, for December, if you could please. Give us a comparison of our reserve. How does that compare to our monthly expenditures, to our average? So for example, we have a 19% reserve. I know the state requires 4%, which is not even a month of payroll.
Right.
Uh, I'd like to see how we compare in our reserves restricted and unrestricted to our monthly expenditures. And for us to start thinking of in the future of how we can come up with some kind of a plan where we can reduce our expenditures. So that we can reduce that projected ending fine balance being in the red. So, thank you.
Any other board member comments? Then with that, I'd like to call for a motion to accept the un-audited actuals of 2021. Please.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Sims Moten. And a second. Great. So with that, board members, please signify, uh, your vote with. By raising your hand and saying aye. This motion passes. And thank you so much, Ms. Hernandez. It passes unanimously, uh, not only where the slides really, really clear. But also your presentation was clear and concise. We're very happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lacey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lacey.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Let's see. I guess we could keep going. Let's see if we can get one more in before our, our break. We'll go on to item number two, which is action item, uh, on the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Dash zero five regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for K-12. I'll turn this over to Educational Services, looks like it's Sierra, for comments and review.
Good evening, President Ford, board members, Dr. Maldonado. Uh, Brian, could we get the resolution up on the screen, please? I am here today on behalf of Ed Services to bring you resolution number twenty twenty-one. Slash twenty-two oh five, which is the annual resolution regarding sufficiency of instructional materials. Um, Ed Code requires us, uh, six oh one one nine to have a public hearing, which we did this evening. So thank you for that. It also requires us, as this resolution states, to announce that public hearing in at least three places. And we always exceed that by making sure it's up in every single school. So thank you, office managers. As well as the front office here. Thank you, Alma Flores. Um, and we encourage the public to participate through the public comment process, as was noted in, uh, the board meeting today. Uh, six oh one one nine is all about making sure that students have access to core curricular materials. And that we certify that we have sufficient quantities for each student on hand. It is primarily about the Core Four, Mathematics, Science, History, English Language Arts and designated ELD. Um, we also are sort of find today that we have the materials to do lab science. We would love to show you some of our science that's happening in our secondary spaces and with our boss in elementary. Um, as well as health classes. Uh, so we are asking today that you approve this resolution. And verify that we have sufficiency of materials for this school year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lovridge. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on this action item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Then, board members, do you have any further questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, I wonder if I may call for approval. A motion to approve item number two, adoption of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two dash zero five. Regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for K-12. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. And a second, Ms. Capps, thanks so much. Um, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. And seeing as it is almost seven thirty, we will take a ten-minute break. And come back to do board action item number three. Board members will continue with our member, our meeting right now. We'll go to item number three. This is an item that was discussed in closed session as it involves confidential student information. And now we will call for a motion to approve the petition for readmission of an expelled student. Case two zero one eight nine, no, one eight one nine dash two nine. Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved with appreciation for the hard work that the student did to get back to readmit it.
Thank you, Ms. Sims Moten. And a second.
I said.
Thanks, Ms. Alvarez. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. Onto board action number four. This is the item that was also discussed in closed session as it involves confidential student information. And now I will call for a motion to approve the transfer appeal for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Case twenty twenty-one, twenty-two dash T eleven. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. And a second.
Thank you.
Ms. Sims Moten, thank you for the second. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. This motion passes unanimously. That takes us on to number five. This is approval of the resolution number twenty twenty-one, twenty-two dash zero eight. Recognizing September two thousand twenty-one as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And for this item, number five, I will turn this item over to board member Capps and board member Kelly for comment and review.
Oops. Thank you so much, President Ford. I'm just pulling my, pulling it up.
Are we able to put it on the screen? Thanks.
Well, I, I share, uh, board member Kelly, student board member Kelly's, um, commitment to mental health awareness. And I'm very happy to bring forward this resolution recognizing September twenty twenty-one. As Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and share in the reading with Mr. Kelly. Whereas suicide is a leading cause of death among, among youth that impacts students, family and the community. Research shows that, that the community in which youth reside is a supportive factor in suicide prevention and.
Whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to thirty-four and.
Whereas lesbian, gay and bisexual youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than straight youth. And transgender adults are nearly twelve times more likely to attempt suicide than the general population.
Whereas the month of September twenty twenty-one is National Suicide Prevention Month. When millions of people around the world join their voices to share a message of hope and healing.
Whereas resiliency begins early in life within families and schools and can be strengthened and reinforced throughout the lifespan.
Whereas, whereas striving for zero California Strategic Plan for Suicide Prevention. Urges all Californians to play a role in suicide prevention and promoting health and wellness and.
Whereas it is essential that we educate students about suicide and mental health and the ways they affect all people in the community and.
Whereas in alignment with Suicide Prevention Board Policy five one four one point five two. Santa Barbara Unified School District seeks collaboration with school mental health professionals, school counselors. School psychologists, school social, school social worker, youth outreach workers, nurses, administrators. Teachers, other staff, parents slash guardians, students, local health. Agencies, mental health professionals and community organizations and.
Whereas as part of a comprehensive health education plan, Santa Barbara Unified School District's suicide prevention practices. Involve communication that promotes resiliency, encourages health-seeking behaviors. Help-seeking behaviors and develops action and resources that prevent suicide and.
Whereas these observation, uh, observances. Are united in raising awareness that prevention is possible.
Now therefore be it resolved that as the superintendent of Santa Barbara Unified School District, how I, uh, this is written in her voice. Um, but I'll change it to as, is that for you to take over, Dr. Maldonado? Why don't you do that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now therefore be it resolved that as the superintendent of Santa Barbara Unified School District, I proclaim that our schools will stand with the National Action Alliance. For Suicide Prevention in recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. And of course, I think this board is so supportive of this resolution. I'd like to have a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. And a second. Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. All in favor of supporting the resolution proclaiming September as National Suicide Prevention Month? Please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This motion passes unanimously. That takes us on to item number six. This is the approval of the resolution number two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two dash zero seven. For Santa Barbara Unified School District proclaiming September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Is Latina, Latino and Latinx era heritage month. And for this item, I will turn it over to board members Munoz and Alvarez for comments and review.
Thank you. We are very honored to bring this resolution before the board. And it's a resolution of Santa Barbara Unified School District proclaiming September fifteen to October fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Latina, Latino, Latinx Heritage Month.
To recognize Latino, Latino, Latina, Latino, Latinx Heritage Month. By honoring the histories, cultures and contributions of American citizens. Whose ancestors came from Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, Spain, Brazil. And other mestizo or indigenous groups.
Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, also known in more inclusive terms as Latina, Latino, Latinx Heritage Month. Was first observed in nineteen sixty-eight under President Lyndon Johnson. And was expanded to National Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan. And enacted into law as an annual proclamation in nineteen eighty-eight to a month-long period starting September fifteen. And.
Whereas this law celebrated Hispanic and Latina, Latino, Latinx Americans. The anniversaries of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras. And Nicaragua, while Mexico and Chile celebrate September sixteenth and eighteen, eighteenth respectively and.
Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month begins on September fifteenth and ends on October fifteenth. At the time of the proclamation designation, the term Hispanic was the term used by the US Census. To describe people with Spanish-speaking origin and ancestry. To be more inclusive of multiple identities. Indigenous, Brazilian and others, the district has titled this celebratory month as Latina, Latino, Latinx Heritage Month. And.
Whereas no matter the term one you chooses to use, whether it be Latina, Latino, Latinx. Or Chicano, Chicana, Hispanic, we refer to people whose history is rich. With those who positively influence and enrich our nation, our society, our community, our state. And our schools through their work, commitment to our community, deep value of culture, social justice, liberty and.
Whereas throughout history and into our current day, Latina, Latino, Latinx people have made significant contributions. In fields such as education, government, science, law, medicine, entertainment, literature, sports, military. Thereby, thereby enhancing and shaping the vibrancy of the United States. With centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities. And including notables such as US Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor. Civil rights leader Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta, Ellen Ochoa, the first Latina NASA astronaut. Dr. Miguel Cardoza, US Secretary of Education, Javier Becerra, US Secretary of Health and Human Services. Lynn Manuel Miranda, artist, and our very own Dr. Hilda Maldonado. The first Latina bilingual, bicultural, Santa Barbara Unified School District Superintendent. And.
Yes. Whereas Latina, Latino, Latinx students represent over sixty percent. Of Santa Barbara Unified School District's twenty-one, twenty-two population. Enriching the educational experience of all students and staff and.
Whereas twenty-four percent of certificated, sixty-four percent of classified and thirty-five percent of management staff. Are Latina, Latino, Latinx employees who contribute daily to the accomplishments and education of our youth. And the district celebrates and builds upon the strengths and funds of knowledge that Latina, Latino, Latinx students and staff. Bring with them to school, including cultural perspectives, lived experiences, practices and languages. Further, the district supports the sustainment, sustainment of heritage language. And teaching practices that mirror the lived experiences and customs of our Latinx students and.
Whereas SBUSD has an equity policy that states our commitment to closing achievement. And opportunity gaps for all students is the top priority of the Board of Education, the superintendent and all district staff. And.
Whereas the Board of Education believes that each and every student is to be celebrated. And appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures, languages, ideas. Beliefs and values within a school community and.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education proclaims Latina, Latino. Latinx Heritage Month, September fifteenth to October fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Recognizing this year's theme Esperanza, a celebration of Latina, Latino, Latinx heritage and hope. The theme invites us to celebrate Latina, Latino, Latinx heritage. And to reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilience and hope. The board further urges all students and staff to observe this month by learning and celebrating the histories, cultures. And contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. Spain, Brazil and other mestizo or indigenous groups.
Oh, this resolution is so powerful and important too. I know, uh, Dr. Maldonado, would you like to make a comment about these resolutions?
I do. I just want to thank, uh, our cabinet members, both for the suicide resolution invited Dr. Waggonac, who worked so hard. On our mental health.
Thank you.
Initiatives and work and also to Ed Services and of course our board members. Thank you.
That is fantastic. We do not have any public comments. Are there any other board comments? Please, Ms. Munoz.
I'm, you know, first of all, honored to, um, recognize this resolution along with my board member sister. Um, Ms. Alvarez and also appreciative to Sean Carey, who helped work on this resolution along with others. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It is beautifully written, as was the suicide prevention one. So with that, I'd love to know if I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one, twenty-two dash zero seven. The Santa Barbara Unified School District proclaiming September fifteenth to October fifteen, two thousand twenty-one. As Latina, Latino and Latinx Heritage Month.
I so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz and Ms. Alvarez for the second. It's a race. Board members, all. Board members, all in favor, please signify by raising your hands and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously, and that concludes action items for tonight's board meeting. That takes us to our second report of the evening, the enrollment and staffing report. And I will now ask, it says that it's sponsored by Student Services and Human Resources to introduce the enrollment and staffing report. Reminder to everyone that this is a report item only, and no action will be taken by the board tonight. Dr. Waggonick.
Good evening again, Board, Dr. Maldonado. Yes, this is an interdepartmental report, beginning with Student Services, and then Dr. Beckio will come up to speak about staffing. Your next slide, please. So, Dr. Beckio and I will come to you, are coming to you tonight to share data and information about processes related to enrollment and staffing, and we're doing this together because these two processes are absolutely interdependent on one another. You know, this year's enrollment process began way back in, on December first of two thousand twenty. In fact, in approximately six weeks, we'll start preparing for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three enrollment season. Staffing is, I'm gonna skip down a couple bullets and really say that our staffing, which Dr. Beckio will will present on in a bit, is based on the next year enrollment. And that staffing process, which we meet on weekly, begins in March, and it's adjusted throughout the hiring process as that is needed. So it's absolutely essential, that's why we begin in December with our enrollment. And enrollment for us, because we are really preschool through twelve district, but a K-12 district. Enrollment means any new students coming into our district. So we're enrolling seventh graders from our partner districts, Montecito Union, Gold Springs, Colita, Hope, also any inner district transfers coming in, in any grade. But also, and primarily, our TK and K students coming out of preschools, both our own preschools and then private preschools in the area. So it's quite a process. So we, we also have transfer season, that's part of that, and we have to do the transfers from one school to another, and all that has to happen in a two-month period of time so that by March, we can begin really figuring out what our staffing needs are. Want to catch you up on what happens then, once we begin school and we have staffing. This year, we started our enrollment at twelve thousand six hundred and forty-five students. During the first ten days of every school year, we hold what we call a ten-day count, and we actually count each day how many students are in seats in the school. We compare that to our enrollment in each school to figure out, okay, where are we with our staffing? Do we have more students showing up than we anticipated back in March, April, May, and June? Or do we have fewer? We watch that, and then for any student who does not attend even one minute of class during that ten-day period, all of those students are dropped. Now, they aren't dropped without any effort to find them, and so during that ten days, attendance clerks and others at our schools are making phone calls, trying to find out, you know, where is the student, what's going on, why aren't they at school? And really trying to track down as many students as possible. But then again, if we cannot locate them, they are dropped on day eleven. The exception to this are students with IEPs, and state law requires, and and it's important that we do this, that we have a different process for identifying and searching for our students who have special ed services. So. Next slide. So, I know that last year, the with with COVID and being in distance learning, we were really wanting to make sure that every student was accounted for, and we also had seen a decline in enrollment. I wanted to bring that back to you all this year and share with the board that the decline in enrollment continues, most notably in our elementary schools, which has seen a seven percent decrease since last year, from three thousand five hundred and fifty-five students to three thousand three hundred and fifteen students. But our elementary schools overall have seen a twenty-three percent decline in enrollment in the five years since the two thousand sixteen, twenty-seven school year. And in that year, we enrolled four thousand two hundred and ninety-eight students. So that is a sizable decline. But what that also points out is that really that seven percent did decrease in in the COVID year is not out of the ordinary for it, and I don't think that we can point to COVID alone as being the reason for that decrease, and we'll look at some other data in just a moment. Also want to note that that in those five years, our enrollment has declined by thirty-three percent in our preschools, from two hundred ninety-six to one hundred and ninety-seven students. Our declines in junior high and high school are less dramatic, with a five-year decline of seven percent in our junior highs, from two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine to two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three students. And we've only seen a three percent decline in enrollment in our traditional high schools. That's from six thousand three hundred and sixty-eight to six thousand one hundred and sixty students. It may be that the decline has not yet caught up, and we're going to see that later, but time will tell, certainly. We also enroll a number of students who spend elementary years in private school, and then they come into our schools either in junior high school or high school. Finally, our enrollment in alternative programs at La Cuesta and Alta Vista have remained about the same across the years, however, you do see the increase this year, and that can be attributed to the enrollment of students in the K-8 Alta Vista School Independent Study Program that we opened this year. Next slide. So reasons why students left, let's look at those reasons. As you can see, half the students enrolled in another California public school down there a little over halfway through. So we have fifty percent of the students who left us, fifty percent of the seven hundred and nineteen students moved out of our area entirely. Another fifteen percent moved to schools outside of the state of California, and another eight percent moved entirely to another country entirely. So nearly seventy-four percent of those who left us moved out of the area. We do have a hundred and thirty-six who moved to California private schools. We, we don't account in this data for whether that's in our area or in another community. We had ten students who were placed in juvenile court schools by the legal system. Those students most likely will return to us at some point if they haven't already. We have eleven students who are hospitalized, most likely in rehabilitation settings, and they will also return to us at some point when they they come back. We have eleven students, or thirty-five students who are unaccounted for, and those are students most likely with IEPs who we will continue to look for over time. And then finally, we had one student, Angel Castillo, who was murdered last January on Liberty Street, and Angel would have been a senior at Santa Barbara High School this year, and he accounts for the, he is the deceased student who is listed there. So I bring this up so that the board has a clear understanding of really where this decline is accounted for, and want to now turn this over to my colleague, Dr. Beckio, to share with you our staffing report.
Thank you, Dr. Waggonick. Good evening, Board President Ford, Board members, Superintendent Maldonado. If I could turn your attention to the screen here, you see two visitors that I'd like to introduce to you. We have Ann Peake, who you you all know, Ann is the Director of Human Resources, who will join us tonight for the presentation. And then next to her is Tara Wise, who was recently hired to replace Brian Tangway. She's our coordinator or our classified manager, so she deals with all classified staff, classified hiring, and so she'll join us tonight, too. So I'm really excited to be here to present to you about staffing. I want to start by giving you just a few unique details of COVID and HR practices and how they've impacted HR, just as an intro to our presentation. So COVID has created a, an interesting set of circumstances for human resources, a conundrum, if you will, because we had a large amount of money infused into our system, and if you remember, what we did with most of that money was increased our staffing to provide student services. However, I want to remind you that that happened across every single district in California, so they are also increasing their staffing and looking for people to hire. That resulted in a lot of new positions, a lot of really great opportunities for us. But again, other districts also are looking for those same positions. We had a high number of retirements and resignations. At the same time, we have a very small labor pool across the country, so that causes a little bit of a dilemma. Our traditional methods of recruitment, like job fairs, personal visits to credentialing programs and hiring fairs, were canceled. So we had to do some outside-the-box thinking around how to recruit this year. But the good news is those methods will stay with us, and we will use those in the future as well. We had, we already had a substitute shortage pre-pandemic. We have, it has been exacerbated by the pandemic. We have seen that subs are in short supply, they are not, either not willing to work in schools right now due to COVID, or they're being picked up into teaching positions that are plentiful, and so it's caused a shortage in our subpool. And then we also have a larger-than-normal amount of staff absences, and so that's something that our cabinet and principals is looking at data on really closely, and we're gonna start putting together a plan to to try to minimize the amount of staff absences. And just to add a little bit of a challenge in there, and that is that we also had a really important person retire right in the middle of all of this, which was Brian Tangway, but again, it's an opportunity for me to tell you that Tara Wise has has stepped in and is just a remarkable professional and has done really great work in her space. So with that intro, I'd like to turn it over to Ann Peake for the next slide.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Maldonado, Board President Ford, and additional board members. So what you find represented here in this chart are the class size targets due to COVID conditions. We took into consideration the physical distancing requirements of three feet, but also the infusion of funding for learning recovery, which helped allow us to offer smaller class-sized targets. So what you'll see in front of you are, on the left, is what our current contract class average is. And then we looked at what we could do with the COVID class size average. So for TK three, we went from twenty-five to one to twenty to one. For grades four, six, we went from thirty to one to twenty-five to one. For junior high, it's thirty-three in the contract, but with the COVID class average, we were able to drop it to twenty-eight, and for our high schools nine through twelve, we went from thirty-five to thirty. Both of, all three of these changes in class size average allowed us twenty additional classroom teachers in elementary and twenty additional classroom teachers in second. Dr. Beckio.
Excellent, please. And then this slide gives you a peek at where we actually landed with respect to those targets. So our staffing frameworks team met last spring, and it has a lot to do with enrollment projections, and we made some projections about what staff we needed in order to get to those class size averages, and so this is just to report to you, the board, where we actually landed after our ten-day counts. And so you you can see that we were, we very much hit our targets. What we do, though, is after the ten-day counts, we know what the real bodies are in the classrooms. We actually then look at hotspots, because just because we met all our targets doesn't mean there aren't classrooms, individual classrooms where they may be a little bit heavy. And so we looked at those spaces, we had about four or five that we looked at. We then went to those schools and solved those problems individually with each school, and sometimes it it was adding a teacher, sometimes it was adding a para, sometimes it would have been very disruptive to combo classes to get there, and so we left the class as it is and provided extra support in there. And so we still have additional teachers to add, so we're, have interviews for kindergarten on Monday, where we're going to be looking for a kindergarten teacher for Washington Elementary and a kindergarten teacher for Monroe Elementary. So that brings you very current to what we're looking to do for the class sizes. All right, next slide. This, this slide, its intention here is to just paint a picture of, a full picture of what we really needed to accomplish with respect to hiring. Resignations and retirements are pretty straightforward. If you get one, you have to fill them, right? Where it got a little complicated this year was our promotion situation, because if you see on the right here, you had all these new positions, which generally were, what we were looking for was more veteran staff, and so we had quite a few internal candidates for these positions, and we actually ended up hiring internal candidates, which is what we would consider a promotion. Those promotions equaled actually two sets of hiring we had to do. One was for the promotion, and then one was to backfill the actual spot. So wanted to make that clear to you, and then, and then we have the hundred and eighty-six new positions. And then I wanted to remind the board, again, a little hard to see there, but you can, you can see the yellow maybe lightly there, that's the percentage of new positions that were in each of the classifications, and I did bring that data to you last spring, but I wanted to remind you of that. So we had sixty-eight percent of them were our regular classified positions, thirty were certificated, and two percent were management. Next slide. So this, this slide here gives you an idea of the methods that we used for recruitment. I wanted to highlight just a couple new approaches that we found to be effective. Actually, the principal referral process, what I was seeing very early on was, we had so many interview sets to do that we really needed to, we were seeing that, we were, I was concerned teachers were going to get picked up by other schools, other school districts in the area, and so what we did was, we actually brought in principals and asked them to give us names of people they already know, who have been in our schools, who are ready to teach, maybe student teachers, those kind of things, and we, we got a huge list, and then we set up slots all day long for very quick interview sets, and then offered contracts. So that, I think, one day, Ann Peake might have, we might have hired twenty-some teachers in one day, but that was just to make sure they weren't going to get picked up and on contract by another district, and so that was very successful. We had, we had a staff member that put out flyers all over, he actually lives down in Ventura County, so put out flyers all over Ventura and Santa Barbara, that we thought that was a good idea. We actually made a direct connection with the EDD, the Employment Development Department, and someone there is in tune with all our job openings and then posting them to their people, walk-in applications, which mostly for. Walk-in applications, which mostly for custodial group, we are having them, they can call and walk in, and then we will help fill out the simple application and then, and then conduct the interview. We actually also did a lot of work on Indeed, and we accepted the application on Indeed, so they wouldn't have to then do a link and then do, go to our application process. They just fill it out in Indeed, and then we follow up with them. And then we're working right now, because we still have some gaps to fill. We are working right now on, on a booth at Farmer's Market. We've been offered a table there. So we are going to have, probably on a Saturday and a Tuesday, do a recruitment there and then have a hiring fair also, in kind of in conjunction with that. So if we find someone there, we'll invite them to the hiring fair on a, on a particular day shortly thereafter, those recruitment days. Then, so next slide, Tara, take the next slide.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Beckio. Good evening, Dr. Maldonado, President Ford, and fellow board members. This slide is an overview of our current staffing needs as of last Friday. We hold interviews and hire people just about every day, so this data changes frequently. As you can see, we've broken down the data into our three general categories of certificated, classified, and management vacancies. I wanted to point out that one of our main focuses is recruiting special education paraeducators. As you can see, under classified vacancies in the green box, we currently have 36 special ed paraeducator vacancies. We started with over 40 of these vacancies a couple of months ago. And while we've successfully hired approximately 25 people for these positions over the past couple of months, we've also unfortunately had about 20 resignations or retirements during the same time period. So this is an area that staff will continue to focus on, and we're also working closely with the Special Education Department in this effort. And I'll turn it back to Dr. Beckio.
Thank you. Next slide. We also wanted to have part of this presentation be about our staff diverse workforce issues and really let the board know that, you know, we focused a lot on COVID, obviously. This one issue was one that, that never came off the forefront of what we were doing. In fact, in the fall, we, it was really based on the, the resolution, the student demand resolution the board passed, and then the equity resolution, if you remember in January, I think it was January or February, that was passed. Those two things really drove some of the work we did in spite of us being in a pandemic and COVID. So in this, in the fall, we actually had a series of meetings where we really dug into our selection process. And we looked at the paper screening process and, and the emphasis that we place on the paper screening process, which mainly occurs in HR and with principals. We looked at the application questions and, and that was a good way to, for us to be able to screen who we're dealing with. We, we added a particular application question that was able to get at the background of, of individuals, the background and experiences. We also infused interview questions that were focused on equity and, again, background and experiences that may lend themselves to connecting with the student population we serve. And then our interview sets and scoring rubrics and the things that we emphasize in our, in our scoring of interviews. If you remember, also, the board passed bilingual stipends, which is very helpful as well. The rewriting of all management and certificated, non-management job descriptions. We put an equity theme in there. You've seen those job descriptions, but I wanted to remind you. And also equity statements throughout that really express the values of our district. And just anecdotally, I mean, in the new teacher orientation, we actually had several comments, not one, but several comments about our job descriptions. And they were expressing to us the interest that they saw in the job description expressing our values and that those values matched those teachers. So that was really great to hear, and I wanted to bring that news to you. And then our new formal partnership with Cal State University Channel Islands, I've mentioned this before. In fact, you approved the residencies this year, which we have them in our schools currently. And so that's a really, and that's a really exciting partnership because of the demographic that they serve in their credential program. And then that opportunity with Cal State University, too, I wanted to let you know that I did some work in the spring with a gentleman named Cliff Lambert, maybe you know his name. We were targeting about four African-American black students that are in the Cal State University system to, to actually see if we could get them in a residency with Cal State Channel Islands. Of course, this was a big hurdle because we would have needed the private funding also to do it. He recently let me know that he was not successful with any of the four. They weren't ready for that. But this is an opportunity for us to, I think, to do a public-private partnership and, and actually engage students in a residency program that then they become employees of ours. And then next slide. Here is some data, if you could maybe move the, there you go. This is just data year over year that shows our new hire percentage of white teachers and then they have grouped their Asian, American, Indian, Pacific Islander, Black, Hispanic. And with that concludes our presentation for enrollment and staffing and entertain any questions, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. There are no public comments on this item. I do want to just note how comprehensive this report was. So thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? Please, Ms. Albers.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Beckio, and to you and your team. This is excellent. Thank you for doing this. And maybe you cover this in, in the slide, I believe, where you have the averages, the class size averages by school. I think it's slide number six. Franklin's is 25.5 grades, 4.6. And Washington is 25.4, and it says Washington will be getting an additional teacher, but not Franklin. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, like I said, this, this class average, so let me see if I can break it down for you. So let's say we have a 25.4 class average at Washington. That's, that spans through four through six. And let's say we have 12 classrooms. I don't know if Washington has three each in those grade levels. But what, what ends up happening is we could have 20, 21 in fourth grade, and then, so low class sizes. And then in sixth, we could have 28, 29, 30. And the average is 25.5, but it's a real hotspot for Washington there. Whereas over here at Franklin, you could have, you know, class sizes that are right at 25 in all the grades, and then one that's at 26 or 27, and their averages are the same or about the same, but there's not the same problem at those two schools. So that's what we kind of look for after we look at pure class averages for the grade span. We then look at what are the real numbers saying in each of those classrooms? And so that, I think that's what occurred there, although we did, Franklin was a spot in four through six where we went there to solve a particular issue around a slightly higher class size than 25. Yep.
Ms. Sims-Boden.
Thank you. First, Dr. Beckio, thank you for this report and certainly your efforts to support the student demand and also our equity work. So on slide 10, I believe, you can put that back.
Yes.
On slide 10, where you've got the demographics of the staff. So on the classified, we have 64% Hispanic, Latino, 22.9% in, in white. There, you're looking at those. And compared to the certificated, where you have the opposite. So how does that work with recruitment in terms of having more, tipping that a little bit more, having, bringing it more in line in a certificated? So I'm assuming certificated is teachers?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So what do you?
Certificateed includes teachers, counselors, school psychs, speech and language, all those classifications, library, media teachers.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So yeah, so when with regards to evening, bringing that more to the middle on your classified statement, at the same time on the second one, what is that, has to do with recruitment or just, just more, you know, in trying to, again, look at our equity?
Yeah, so it's absolutely going to be critical how we do our recruitment. It's a, it's actually a really big opportunity for us. It's really the space we should be in. I mean, we have, we have processes for selection that we have made good. We have good questions that get it background and, and aren't, they aren't making decisions based on race or ethnicity, gender, those kind of things. But in recruitment is where we have the opportunity to say, we are going to target certain places, certain schools, certain credential programs to try to target that problem there. Or our management, we might look at places that have a really diverse demographic of people getting admin credentials. So, so I think that's our place of most potential, honestly. And then, again, I think where we are able to help, we have been helping individuals get through a program or coaching them through or encouraging them to get into a program and then having them come work for us.
Correct.
And that's been pretty promising as well.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that, the, the work that's going on, know that it's been over time that it's happened, so I don't expect that it's going to happen overnight. But as our students are looking at this as well and looking at those demographics and those things, so we wanted to show that we're having an effort. So when you come back the next time, hopefully it goes a little more closer together with regards to that.
Yes, we will keep monitoring the data as well. We'll keep, I mean, our, our staff believes in it. The staff you see here are leading the hiring of each of our areas, and so we will continue down this road.
Yeah, much appreciated. Thank you.
I'd like to add, we didn't mention it in your report, Dr. Beckio, but we also have the PEAK program, the Dr. Maggiore also overseas, where we also have been able to recruit and hire former students who we've helped see through the pipeline and have come back to teach in our school district. But as you say, it's a slower-moving track, but we need to kind of get closer to those rates. Thank you.
Ms. Capps, please.
Just three quick comments, no questions, but just wanted to thank Ms. Peak, Ms. Wise, Dr. Beckio, and the team. I don't recall a presentation like this in the five years I've been on the board. It's wonderful to see all the work in HR pulled together and all of the different facets and what it means for our students and our families and our staff. So thank you. I wanted to just, I'm also very relieved to hear about the ratios of, of class sizes. That was quite the concern amongst a lot of parents in those first days of school, and I even heard about it today. So just a friendly suggestion to principals to share those averages so that, you know, there's just a lot of misinformation of, oh, so, so-and-so teacher got plucked to, you know, another district and that kind of thing. So I think that that would help. I really appreciate that you've gone to the campuses and taken care of some of the hotspots, as you said, that we heard about, including Monroe Kindergarten. I imagine that's been reconciled. So thanks for that one-on-one kind of attention, because again, class size is always an issue. You want the best, highest quality education for your child and certainly want to equip our teachers with the ability to reach each child, but now it's a whole different safety issue under COVID. So it, it does, these numbers actually, I, I found them very reassuring as someone who thinks about and knows about these kids in those classrooms every day. So thank you for that. And lastly, I just want to put the, the shortage of, of staff in a little context, because I know how hard you're working. I applaud the efforts. It's wonderful to see the gains that we've made in diversity, and I know we're on a track to keep those going. But I looked up just out of curiosity, because I know each school by school were really hurting and need more staff. But nationally, this is, this is not just a Santa Barbara Unified problem, right? And it's, it's like Santa Barbara County problem. It's also a national problem. So I looked at the Department of Labor, and in fact, the latest numbers from the summer is there's a 4 million person job gap. There was 10.9 million jobs available in August and only 6.7 people who got new jobs. So this is affecting every sector in society, and we're feeling it here. But we just, just do what we can to get the word out and use our best ambassadors, us and for sure the staff. So wonderful to hear about the efforts you're making, but just recognize that for anyone listening, that this isn't specific to us here, but rather what's just the, what they're calling the Great American Shortage phenomenon related to COVID. So it's quite fascinating, and I hope we'll get through it, but thanks for all the efforts.
Ms. Munoz.
Yes, just some comments and certainly a huge compliment to Dr. Beckio and to Ann Peake and Tara Wise for all the, the work that's been put, you know, into this in terms of like hiring, you know, 20 teachers and all the creative solutions and wonderful effort, like such as the, you know, principal referral process and just, you know, really doing all you can to get teachers and staff hired by our district before they're hired by others and such, and certainly the partnership, the, you know, the idea of like the residency and working with private partners such as Cliff Lambert, who, you know, is wonderful and stuff. And, and just, you know, continuing to do that. I just really applaud, you know, all that effort on your part. I know you folks are thinking about this all the time. The other agency that I would wonder about would be the State Rehab Office, where I know I talk to folks that are professionals who, you know, due to COVID or other reasons, they're being retrained for, you know, for different jobs that they can, that they're certainly, you know, very capable of. So that would be one, would be the State Rehab Office here locally, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have just one comment for context, and Ms. Capps and I did not speak about this before the board meeting, but I, I do think it's important to understand context, especially within the state. When I worked in Los Angeles, I remember being absolutely shocked to hear that routinely LAUSD starts the school year with 2,000 substitutes in the classrooms. And that's because this is a severe, severe teacher and certificated employee shortage throughout the state. But the good news is that there are lots of things that the board and the members of our community might be interested in knowing that are happening across the state. And in fact, Assembly Bill 130, which just passed this summer, further addressed reducing the requirements for credentialing. They are looking at finding ways to give all districts opportunities for incentives such as signing bonuses, referral bonuses, and also identifying sources of teachers such as foreign countries and the business world. The bottom line is that fewer and fewer American young people are enrolling in teacher credential programs, and we must find teachers somewhere else. And also the baby boomer educator population is now at retirement age. So I really appreciate all your efforts also, team, and keep us posted on those positions that you're trying to fill.
Certainly will. And if I could make one more comment, just we, if you take out the leaves of absences, we started the school year with teachers in our classrooms. And so you mentioned the statistic from, from LA Unified, but I did want to just mention that because our team, there's about 10 people behind Tara and Ann and myself, who are really passionate about making sure the schools have what they have and, and what they need, and we started the school year with teachers. Now, we still have some positions to hire and we have a couple teacher positions that we've added, but we started the year with teachers in the classroom. I'm very proud of it.
Bravo. Thank you. Continuing on with our agenda, there are, in letter J, there are no items for our, from the consent agenda that we need to designate for further discussion. So I'll just call the board's attention to the coming events and the future agenda items. Please, everyone, check the district website for up-to-date calendar listings of activities and holidays. It is back to school season, as you heard numerous times tonight. So we hope our community will take advantage of these important meetings. We also have quite a list of future agenda items for Ms. Dr. Maldonado and her team to work on. And so with that, we will move on to concluding this meeting. We have no other agenda items. Our next regular board meeting is on Tuesday, September 28th at 5:30 PM. And the board and the cabinet will be masked and meeting in person with the public participating virtually. And as we adjourn tonight, it seems that, to me, that throughout this evening, we have moreover focused on always keeping at the forefront of our minds the welfare and the care of our most precious treasures, the young people of Santa Barbara. the welfare and the care of our most precious treasures, the young people of Santa Barbara Unified. And so I will conclude tonight with a quote from Mr. Rogers. He said, "We live in a world in which we need to share responsibility. It's easy to say, it's not my child, not my community, not my world, not my problem. And then there are those who see the need and respond. I consider those people my heroes. And so to all of you, that's how I think of you." Tonight's meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board is adjourned at 8:35 PM. Good evening.